Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1, addition of any items of new business to the agenda. 3.2, minutes of the April 19th special meeting, the May 2nd regular meeting, and the May 19th special meeting. Approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition fund, and declare the following items as surplus.
Okay, we'll go back out to agenda item 3.2, our minutes under April 19th, 2022 special meeting, the May 2nd regular meeting, and our May 19th, 2022 special meeting. I'm not seeing errors in those minutes. Agenda item 3.3, our top attachment are the investments. Bottom attachment, if you'll open that also, that is our year-to-date as of May for our gross production of our vehicle, REA, back school earnings, and county four mil. We had a lower month in gross production than we've had in previous months. I'm not sure why that was, but anticipate that will increase over the course of the next couple of months because of the increase in barrels of oil at this point in time. You can see motor vehicle, we have overcollected, REA overcollected, undercollected in our county four mil, school earnings. When you look at the next page of that attachment, you can see a comparison through a chart from FY '22 to FY '21. When you look at the third attachment, you can see that comparison in numbers. We've had a revenue increase of a million and four, approximately more than FY '21 weeks, and 162,000 or less as compared to FY '21. We continue to see a very large increase in inflationary items, really all items. There's not one particular area where we're not seeing cost increases, and so we anticipate that will continue into our next fiscal year. Activity fund reports, Mrs. Durkey has gathered those both up. If you'll open those attachments, all activity funds are in good standing. She is working on the process to close out those funds as we go into the new fiscal year. She has sent out all of our sanctioning paperwork for our booster clubs to be approved by the board in July. Agenda item 3.5, we have no fundraisers for the month. She is working to close those out. We'll bring a list of new fundraisers to the July 12th board meeting. Agenda item 3.6, we have two interaccount transfers. The top attachment, if you will open that, that is our distribution of Alba High School basketball gate. You can see the distribution numbers for each one of those programs. If you will open up the second attachment, we have our color run distribution. All of this money was deposited in the Longfellow, and then it was equally divided out among each school. Very good fundraiser. Thank you to Mrs. Tucker, Mr. Feely, and Mrs. Webster for their work on that. Agenda item 3.7, if you will open up that agenda item, and I'm also going to put this up here on the screen. I think it may be a little easier to look at than the way it's attached on your board agenda item. So our child nutrition report for this month is to look at where we are at as we move into the next fiscal year. We received our rate from Keystone with regard to what we will be charged next year. We also received guidance from State Department of Ed and USDA that meals will no longer be free next year. And so it's very important that we emphasize turning in the free and reduced lunch applications for a number of reasons. The first reason is that really helps offset other costs to our students. The second reason is it opens up funding through Title I grants through economically disadvantaged. So really, it's going to be a real point of emphasis during the roll-in to make sure we get those applications filled out. So as we look at this spreadsheet, just kind of want to walk you through this. We will bring this back at the June, end of the June board meeting. We used to have a process called the paid lunch equity tool, and we use that to work our figure for what our lunches would cost. As a result of COVID, the paid lunch equity tool was not used because all lunches were free. On top of that, we really haven't raised our lunch prices or breakfast prices over the course of the past five to six years at least, as far back as we can find. So as we walk through this, I think you'll kind of see that we, why we're considering a minimal rate increase to our breakfast and lunches. So if you look at the elementary, the current rate that we charge is $1.85, and it's $2.15 for our lunches. So when you look at that, we are making a positive when we're charged from Keystone. We have a positive there, but when we bill out for our lunches, we are losing money from our Keystone rate. So it's real important that we look at, from the guidance from the State Department, at a 10-cent increase. Many schools each year automatically do a 10-cent increase just to stay up with inflationary costs. We've not done that, and so that's something we're considering as we move forward. So you can see the breakdown there at our new rate. If we were to charge our new rate for elementary, it's $1.95, okay? So that 10-cent increase, we would be in the positive 29 cents there, okay? Even with a 10-cent increase, we're still losing a dollar seven a meal for lunch at our elementary rate, okay? And so we did that increase. It would go to $1.95 at the middle school and $2.35 for lunches. At the high school, the new rate would be $1.95 and $2.60 for lunches. Our adult rate, we were losing $2 per meal for breakfast and for lunch, and so we would increase that potentially to a dollar. You notice that we still lose a dollar on every meal. And so it's real important when we talk about the free and reduced lunch aspect, if you go here to this furthest column, O, you see the reimbursement rate. And so when you're reimbursed at those rates, if we have folks that do that, that helps offset those costs so that we can be at a break-even point. Any questions about that? And so as we begin to review handbooks, and like I said, we'll bring that back in June with our paid lunch equity tool, we'll communicate that more. But if you have any questions, please let me know. Okay, agenda item 3.8, surplus. We have two attachments there, Washington and Longfellow. Those are surplus items. Also communicate to the board that we are going to be disposing of surplus items. We'll have a surplus sale in the next couple of weeks to clean up our old armory area in our dust shed behind the middle school and get rid of some of those items. Any questions about the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend.
Should we have a sale or an auction, or just...
We're going to do a sale. We're going to set some prices for some items that we have. A lot of those items have been or are either beyond repair or have been exposed to the elements in the old armory or outside. And so our goal is to clean that area, get what money we can out of it.
Sure. Motion? Consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.8. Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '22. 4.1, general fund as referenced, and 4.2, building fund as referenced.
If you'll look at the agenda item 4.1, open the top attachment, walk you through some of those purchase orders. Purchase order number 522, 11,400 with O U L Science Center. That's going to be trained through Tara Warwick with our students on inclusionary practices. So that will be occurring this month with that. Purchase order number 523, 3,340, which repairs to the 2007 activity bus. Purchase order number 525, 2,925, Index of Oklahoma. That is some repairs to our electronic door locks at Lincoln Elementary. Purchase order number 526 for 2,457.76. Purchase order to Bank Central for additional cameras in the indoor facility. Purchase order number 537, 26,400, part of our uniform rotation. Alba High School football uniforms being purchased for next year. Purchase order number 546,368, Mathfields, that's copy paper. And purchase order number 544, School Safe ID, ID visitor management system, 18,619.75. That would be a management system that we use to help facilitate our check-in, checkout process and visitor management process for all of our schools. The second attachment is our payroll encumbrances for this month, and you see one there. Agenda item 4.2, building fund. 1,485 R&amp;R systems, that's guttering that shares at Washington. We still have some area where water runs into that newest wing of the building, and so we're hoping this can help move that water away from our classroom. Purchase order number 67 for 2050, that has some repairs to the high school girls locker room. Purchase orders number 70 and 74, 76,284, that's custodial supplies for the summer. And 74, 4,339.86, finished for our district fours. And then purchase order number 72 with Triarc, that was an additional fee for them to begin looking at the drainage area on the northeast side as it goes into the track, because that will be, that will work hand-in-hand with that parking lot. That parking lot has been draining down the side of that hill, and so they're also willing to begin planning that. So that was part of that fee. Any questions on the general fund or building fund?
Back on that general fund?
Yes.
Number 544, the school ID visitor management system, is that for all schools?
Yes, we would use that at all sites. That's going to be a federally reimbursed purchase, something that we've looked at. We feel like it's an appropriate time to provide a little more due diligence and security at all of our sites.
Will it be on all the entrances, or just the main entrances?
It'll be the main entrances, and it's a check-in, checkout system. You scan your driver's license, and it provides some security checks for staff at the front office.
And if I might add, we've used it for several years in my prior district. You can also set it so that it flags when someone comes to pick up a child that maybe isn't to have access to that child, or if you need to know that a parent is in the building or someone in particular has signed in, they can, you receive a text or an email, and it will tell you that that person is there and alert you to someone who might be of concern.
So each time I would come to the high school's front door, I would need my driver's license?
Yes.
So we'll communicate that with people to have that available.
And it is a very important thing. I have had experience with PTO moms that are not real happy that I am IDing them, but I reassure them, I would ID my mother, because it is very important that we make sure the right child gets with the right adult.
And I visit schools, and I had to do this, and they all know I'm coming, and they all know me.
Yes.
In the event there's a fire while I'm there, they know that I was in the building, and they go, whatever happened to Karen Kane? She checked in, did she not check in? So it's a safety reason for all of us, too, to know that we've got guests in the building, and we can make sure that we get them out, the eighth graders, whoever it is I'm working with. So it's really a widespread safety.
You do get used to it. The post office a few years changed, you'd have to have your driver's license if you use a credit card.
Well, in today's world, I think it's free.
You do get used to it.
I'll just remember if any of you have questions.
Will teachers have another system? Or like if a teacher came to the front door, would they just have their regular key, or...
Yes. Yeah, a teacher's going to have their key card.
But it'll also record when they came in and when they act.
And not to get too far into what we do, but everything in each door is, we have a camera at every door.
Sure.
And so you're monitored at the front door, and at this door, you're at Alba High School. So when you come up and that door locks, you have to ring that door.
Yes.
And when you ring it, it takes a snapshot of your face.
Okay.
I need to call my husband.
Yeah.
I'm really busy, so it's pretty good.
It happens.
I bet it does.
For people don't realize.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it could be funny. Okay. Item number five, superintendent's report. Oh, let's have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Out of 4.1, 4.2, as presented.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll begin with resignations that we have. We have a resignation from Julie Rinn, a speech pathologist. Margot Hamilton is our middle school basketball coach. Jennifer Tomberlin, they will be moving, and so she has resigned from her high school secretary job. Brandon Ellis is going back to school. He will continue to help us in an extra-duty capacity with football. Classes won't allow him to continue to be a career professional. Marcus Meads, resignation is for high school baseball, and so Marcus will continue to help us in other capacities, but will no longer be doing baseball. And then finally, we have Pete Phillips, and Pete Phillips will be taking on another head coaching job at Hinton, so will no longer be with us.
Did you say Hinton?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Just want to give you an update from my communication on where we're at with our construction projects. As you can tell, it's slowly, slowly coming along. Spoke to Kyler last week, and our architect, they are hoping to have simple engineer drawings completed by the end of this week. They are intent on trying to put out a big package that is inclusive of all of our projects in the, with the intent that we can get some good prices. They are concerned about whether the market is. My first question was, when, what's a timeline? When can I communicate what the timeline would be? So we know that HVAC is at least six months out before you can get anything on site. They anticipate, from a cost savings point of view, you want to try to do all your projects at the same time. So it looks like spring to next summer before there could be any kind of progress made on any of our projects. So I will update you end of this week. I'll have more information. Hopefully, at that June board meeting, I can have that timeline be refined a little bit, and we'll be able to bring some things back to you in July for year weekend. All right? Also want to inform you, numerous education bills that will impact us, we will be needing to review policy over the next couple of weeks. Too numerous to tell you all of the bills that are education-related, but we will review policies, bring in new policies to the board for adoption. That is all I have.
Item number six. Item 6.1, discussion of possible board action. Vote to rehire the following non-certified personnel for fiscal year '23. Attachment A.
So if you'll open that attachment, that attachment are the support employees of Alba Public Schools. Really appreciate, it has been a difficult two years, and we've got really great people. And so I would recommend the rehiring of these non-certified personnel for FY '23.
So moved.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Item 6.2, discussion of possible board action. Vote to approve the following renewal contracts for membership services for fiscal year '23. 6.2.1, Charles A. Carroll, CPA. 6.2.2, OS SBA Employment Services. 6.2.3, City of Alba, our SRO. 6.2.4, Woods County Commissioners. And 6.2.5, the Oklahoma School Insurance Group, OC, liability and vehicle insurance.
6.2.1 is our contract for auditing through Carols and Associates for S and I Needs Routine Contract. 6.2.2, OS SBA Employment Services. They provide all of the unemployment services. They receive the claims, they go through the process, we help with the verification. Agenda item 6.2.3, our City of Alba SRO contract. We have two SROs that we contract in the city. One is eight hours, the other is six, and we share that with the Career Tech for the other two hours. There is a $3 increase, a little under $3 increase for that contract, but that has been a good service that we need to continue. 6.2.4, Woods County Commissioners. That contract is that we will help with any litigation fees with regard to tax protests. And then finally, agenda item 6.2.5, our OC contract. Our OC contract has steadily increased each year. You can see, there's a letter attached there of our agent who came and met with me. We are one of the schools that had a good premium, lower than most. 283,813 is what that will be, which is a significant increase when you look at last year, 2,203,544. When you go back two years, it's almost double that, it was 141,000. And so a lot of this can be attributed to the last couple of years, when we had the weather issues, and there were many schools that had pipes burst and claims filed. This insurance has been good for our district, and I would recommend that we continue with OC. Any questions?
The Woods County Commissioners, is that, do we pay a percentage of what we would receive?
Yes.
From the...
The litigation fees, yes.
So for the fees, we pay a percentage of what we would receive?
Have we looked at other insurance companies except for private?
Private carriers? No, we have not.
Do you think that's a thing we should start to look at?
Once you're not with OC, they don't have to take you back. They provide good insurance for schools, and so we know of schools that have been with other companies, or there was another company that provided school insurance. That company's no longer solid. And so many of those schools that have tried to get on with OC or have gone through private carriers and have large claims haven't been able to get back on with OC. We could certainly explore those things, but it would be a gamble to do that.
Do you know of other providers out there?
It's a pretty tough market for school buildings. Some of the schools and some of the cities have pulled their vehicles out, because you know, look, when you carry vehicle insurance. These buildings are, it's pretty tough to insure these companies. I, they got so little barrel. The fact that if we went somewhere and had a bad experience and wouldn't take us back, then the premiums could be three or four times.
And it's a significant increase.
Yeah, it is. And I was telling Mr. Argo today, in some environments, auto insurance is actually going down a little bit. So it was kind of rare. I wondered if our fleet had increased. Did we have a bus?
What has happened with all of those? If you'll open that up.
American General isn't a company that does, used to do law schools. And then OC was a group of retired super units that started a company to compete with Oklahoma General and American General. It was out of, it's right there on I-44 that had that Stroud, located in Stroud, Oklahoma. I mean, it's, before I got on the board, we coored them, coored with quite a few schools in the country, and it's just a pretty tough market.
So they went through and required appraisal, and they're slowly working through, like not every school in Oklahoma has got their appraisal yet. I think they broke it up, the ways it's explained to me into maybe thirds. They've gone through and they're reappraising everyone's contents and values, and they're requiring more because of the losses that they've taken over the course of the last couple of years. And so that's where we've seen our significant increase in appraisal values and replacement cost.
Yeah.
What is it gonna, what's it gonna cost to replace it?
Yeah, depends on when you get your appraisal.
I better believe it.
You hoped you got it three years ago.
Correct.
And not today.
It just seems like a significant increase. But you've got a continued issue if it's that time.
You know, if that's something the board would like for me to explore and do some research on throughout the year before renewal, we can certainly do that. But like I said, once you move away from them, then you risk an increased premium and an increased cost.
It's a little bit like what Jane said, I mean, they have us over a barrel, and I feel like they are taking advantage of that.
I do think, I was a little miss, I think, I thought they misled us a little bit on the deductibles. You know, for us to, in a position we're in, to take a $25,000 or $30,000 deductible on these buildings wouldn't be that big deal. There should be some cost savings, even maybe a $5,000 deductible on the buses and these things. But he told you there wasn't enough premium savings to warrant it.
Right.
Which is probably true.
For the, especially for the hail part of, that's what he ran for.
For the hail for the building. What would be, could you maybe divide it between the buildings and the vehicles? Again, vehicles are something you can move around. We don't seem to have enough wood. The buildings, I mean, it's important that we have good coverage of those buildings. Where are we? Making a motion? Of 6.2 and all those contracts.
Make a motion and approve 6.3 through 6.4.
6.2 and then the 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, is that what we want to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Discussion of possible board action, vote to approve an offer of a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one, served by position for the 2022, '23 school year.
So I would like to introduce Maya Stewart. She's been working in South Barber as a special education teacher, and she's fully certified in Oklahoma as a special education teacher and received her degree from Northwestern Oklahoma University. And most important, she's a four-month gold log. So I would like to recommend her to the board to fill a high school special education position for the school year '23. So I would like to recommend her to the board to fill a high school special education position for the school year 2020, or '22, '23.
Motion?
So moved.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Well, welcome.
Yeah.
Mrs. Stewart. Nice to have you. 6.4, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the Alba Public Schools Board of Education, Title III Consortium Member District, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Board of Education of Blackwell Public Schools.
Because we received less than $10,000 in funderal aid for this particular program, we joined this cooperative with Blackwell Public Schools. And we use this money to purchase computers, translators for ELL students. So it's been a good program for our kids. Currently, right now, we serve 22 English learners in our district. Excuse me, 23, which is down from 48 last year. I would recommend approval of this contract. This has helped us enhance that program each year.
So moved?
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the First Baptist Church to use two school buses during July 25th through the 30th, 2022, transport use to and from Paul's Creek in Davis, Oklahoma.
First Baptist Church will buy a licensed certified bus driver and fuel. This is a normal request that they use and so I would recommend approval of the agenda item 6.5.
I make a motion, vote to approve 6.4.
6.4. I'll second that.
6.5.
Five. Pardon me, I can't even read either. There's 6.5, pardon me.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Other than saying any business? Item number eight, proposed executive session to conduct ongoing evaluation by superintendent for 25 Oklahoma State statute, section level of 307B1. Vote to convene into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.